There's Carly.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hi, thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for accommodating my busy session schedule allowing me to join remotely.
Okay, I think we are waiting for a couple more planning commissioners, I believe.
Yeah, we need to.
Get started in a minute.
Do the director's report, too. So Carly, I'm just going to turn off your camera right now. Or you, thank you.
I was waiting for two more commissioners. Or should we get going?
I think we're ready to go.
Better. We'll get started. Evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Mori Badoo and the Chair of the Washington County Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, May 21st. And the meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carr.
Present.
Commissioner Frye.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Just.
Present.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Present.
Commissioner Witts.
Present.
Commissioner Will. Commissioner Will and Vice Chair Monta Blanco.
Here.
And Chair Mori Badoo.
Present.
Eight commissioners present.
Thank you. May we have the director's report?
Thank you, Chair. And before I start my report, I would like to introduce Pam Shuredi. She's our county council who will be joining us and taking over land use. So we're very pleased to have her on board. The county council's office is extremely understaffed, and so we appreciate every second of time that Pam Shuredi has to share with us. So thank you for joining us this evening. In terms of the director's report, you'll be pleased to hear that we have a recommended appointment to fill the last remaining vacancy on the Planning Commission, and that will go before the Board on June 3rd. So we will be then following up. That's actually a position to serve the remainder of an existing term, so it would be through January 31st of 2027. And as soon as we have official action from the Board on that appointment, then we'll be scheduling a training session, and then that individual will be able to attend the June 18th meeting, and we are planning on having a June 18th meeting, just to give you a heads up on what might be coming. And then in terms of other updates and events, Chair Mori Badoo and Todd Porkowitz attended the county boards and commissions' open house, so this is an opportunity for us to kind of present the work that you all do to interested individuals of the community, and hopefully result in people expressing their interest and applying when there are future openings on the commission. We've got a number of online open houses that are active at the moment in the Land Use and Transportation Department. We use a different web address for those, so we'll have the project name followed by a dot and then washcoopenhouses.org. So that's W H, excuse me, W A S H C O O P E N H O U S E S dot org. And so there's four of them that are active right now. So the first and I would say the most important one is our planning work program for 2025-27. So that project name, Work Program 25, and then the .washcoopenhouses.org is the website address for going and providing comments. And that website will be open for input and comments through May 30th. May 30th is the last day that we'll be taking comments. We're also doing a microtransit pilot project. That one also is open for comment through May 30th. And that address, project address, is microtransit.washcoopenhouses.org. The third one is for Farmington Road Concept Plan. We're looking at different concepts to guide reconstruction of Farmington Road between 209th and Kinnaman Road, and that's part of the transfer from ODOT to the county. So that open house is open through June 1st, and it's farmingtonconcept.washcoopenhouses.org. And then the last one is our Transportation Safety Action Plan. And you recall staff from the Transportation Planning Division gave a briefing on that previously, and that one is open through June 15th. And this has a little bit more complicated address. It's TSAP update 2025.washcoopenhouses.org. So those are all of our open houses, and then this is tied to one of our items, briefing items on the agenda this evening. The first meeting of the Community Development Code Assessment Project Technical Advisory Committee will be held in June, and member Commissioner Amber Rosenberg will be serving as a Planning Commission representative on that TAC. We've got our work session items tonight include legislative update, which Carly is here to provide, followed by Community Code 101. That was to give you, and Ann Elvers from the current Planning Division is here to provide that. And then, and lastly, adoption of metro town center boundaries. And we are proposing that we would cancel the June 4th upcoming meeting and then, but have a work session on June 18th with the primary item of discussion being the rural accessory dwelling units. And we have one other in the queue that we are planning to add but aren't ready to announce quite yet. So with that, that concludes my director's report, and I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. At this time, we can move on to public communication. Is anyone signed up to speak on matters not on the agenda?
We have no one signed up. And no one in the audience virtual or.
Okay. So we will now move on to the next agenda item, which is the work session with the legislative update.
Great, and that will be presented by Carly Silva Gabrielson. She is online. And we asked Carly, we know it's not the end of the session yet, but we asked her to come. There's a lot that has been happening and some, some pieces have fallen into place, so we asked her to come and speak with you tonight. Go ahead, Carly.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Badoo, Vice Chair Monta Blanco, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Carly Silva Gabrielson. I'm one of the members of the Government Relations Team here at Washington County and have, have the honor of having the Land Use and Transportation Department in my portfolio, which is why I get to join, join you all today for this legislative update. Next slide, please. This just touches on the legislative landscape that we currently are finding ourselves in. We are at 39 days until the constitutional signee die deadline. Not that any of us are counting. However, there is a target signee die of June 18th. Frankly, we are expecting that it's going to settle somewhere in the middle of those two dates, but there, there is certainly potential that we do run through the finish line tape on, on June 29th. As I'm sure many of you are aware, there are some very large legislative items that, that still need to advance, such as a transportation package and some, some big pieces of legislation that I'll get into in future slides. I also wanted to just highlight that we started the session with over 3,400 bills. So you probably recalled that there was a lot of bills that we discussed the last time that I had opportunity to speak with you, and thankfully, we have narrowed that to just over 1,700 now. We are expecting a further narrowing of bills once we get to the second chamber deadline on the 23rd of, of this month. And that marks the chamber in which, excuse me, that marks the date in which a bill must pass both the Chamber of Origin and then a committee in the opposite chamber to advance. I always like to flag that there are several committees that aren't subject to these deadlines. Among them, the Rules Committee, Revenue, Ways and Means Legislative Audits, and then Special Committees, such as the recently created committee that will hopefully advance a transportation bill, which is called the Joint Committee on Transportation and Reinvestment. Next slide, please. Great. I wanted to take an opportunity just to highlight the package of bills that some are referring to as the Governor's Housing Initiative Bills. There really are three that are within the Governor's top priorities. However, I have highlighted a fourth there that her office has taken interest in and that we are expecting to advance. Many of you are aware of what these bills intend and propose to do, but I'll just touch on them, on them quickly. House Bill 2138 is what is known as the Middle Housing Bill, and it proposes to make extensive changes to the land use density development type and zoning to increase housing production. It directs counties and cities to permit a wider range of housing types on lots and will have a significant implication on planning departments across the state. So our wonderful staff have been working with the governor's staff and a strong coalition of local governments to provide feedback about this bill as it has advanced. So it has been amended significantly, and we are continuing to track its progress. The bill is currently in Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation, and we do expect that it will advance. The second bill, House Bill 3031, and I apologize, I should have some dash A's on, on this slide, I believe, is a great bill that would, that proposes to create a housing infrastructure production fund with an initial $100 million investment. And what this will do is allow local jurisdictions to apply for grants, loans, and forgivable loans to fund infrastructure development for affordable housing. Obviously, we know that it is something crucial that would greatly benefit Washington County and other counties in the state, so looking forward to that advancing, and it is currently in Ways and Means. House Bill 2258 was a bill that did change significantly from introduction, as many of these have. However, it would essentially give the Land Conservation Development Commission the ability to require local governments to issue land use decisions on certain types of development. And then this fourth one, very interesting. It allows for the designation of state lands within the urban growth boundaries to be identified as home start lands and be available for first-time homeowners. It also allows local jurisdictions to recommend lands to put forward, and there is a lottery system in which those homeowners can be selected for, for those, those lands. So very interesting concept. That bill is actually continuing to move. It is in Revenue and just had a work session on the 15th, so tracking to see where that one advances to. Next slide, please. Wonderful. These two bills are, are ones that really propose significant changes on, on the ways that planning departments process permits and review building plans. I'm going to focus first on SB 974A. The bill would, I guess, had to impact development permitting timelines and would require local governments and special districts to complete final review of engineering plans for residential developments in 120 days of submission. So these two bills are shot clock bills, which is, which is what we refer to them as. And SB 974A has been amended significantly. In fact, we just had a hearing earlier today on the Eighth Amendment of this bill, and I just want to applaud the really great work that the Land Use and Transportation Department staff at the county did, because they have provided a lot of really great feedback and testimony for both the House and Senate committees that have significantly refined this bill. I can be forthcoming that we did submit testimony in opposition. However, we, we are glad that the bill, as it's advancing, is, is less problematic than what we saw with it being authored. The bill is currently in the House Committee on Housing and Homelessness, but it was referred to the floor today, so we will see that advance. I also wanted to flag SB 6A, which was kind of the companion bill to 974 in some ways. That one would have required a 45-day shot clock on building permits, and frankly, other proposals that would have been problematic for our planners. The bill was amended several times and ultimately forward to Ways and Means in April, and that is not expected to move. So that bill is in Ways and Means and hopefully just dying a small death. Next slide, please. Great. So these are two bills that are of particular interest because they would impact the composition of boards and commissions, such as yourself. SB 49A, this bill would increase the membership of the Building Code Structure Board within the Department of Consumer and Business Services from nine to 11 members. It also requires that the additional two members be an individual of a fire protection engineer and then also a certified structural engineer who specializes in the design of residential buildings more than three stories. They made some changes, so they, there's no longer an allowance for that architect position to be interchanged with a member who is an engineer. And that bill has already advanced both chambers and has been signed into law by Governor Kotek. House Bill 3136, again, more of interest to this commission, would remove the limitation that city and county planning commissions can have no more than two voting members engaged in the buying, selling, or development of real estate for profit, except for the planning commissions that have five or fewer members. This bill recently passed the House and is currently with the Senate Housing, excuse me, Senate Housing Development Committee, and the effective date would be January 1st of 2026. And it, all signs point to it advancing and being signed into law. Next slide, please. Great. These are two bills that we're seeing that are, are making changes to the way that the statewide wildfire hazard map has been utilized in planning and, and building. So SB 75A would remove references to the statewide wildfire hazard map from map-related provisions and statutes authorizing the county to approve accessory dwelling units and replacement dwellings in high wildfire hazard areas. It did pass the House and is currently in the Senate Climate, Energy, and Environmental Committee, and we are expecting a work session tomorrow, 5:22 at 8:00 a.m., so we will see what the future of that bill holds. A bill of the similar topic, SB 83A. This bill proposes to fully repeal the statewide wildfire map and its application to defensible space standards and directs the state fire marshal to develop a model code for dispensable space to reduce wildfire risks, direct the Department of Consumer and Business Services. So this bill is, again, scheduled for a work session tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. There was also another bill that was very similar, House Bill 3944, which was introduced on the House side and was referred to rules and is not expected to advance. Another bill not impacting the work of this committee or the Planning Commission, but I wanted to flag just because it's on this topic, is SB 85, which is really interesting because it's, it's one that impacts the insurance industry and proposes to remove the use of the wildfire risk mitigation and the wildfire risk hazard map from the way that, that housing and insurance has been impacting the marketplace. So very fascinating. That bill's sponsor actually is Senator Jeff Golden from Ashland, and he is the one who actually led the introduction of the original use of these wildfire hazard maps. I believe that was back in 2010. I don't have the date in front of me, but what we've really seen is that they have disproportionately impacted homeowners, particularly in rural areas who haven't been able to make a lot of these repairs. So we're now seeing a bill that was introduced by the Senator to essentially repeal the map that he was championing of. So a little interesting tidbit. Next slide, please. Great. And I just wanted to flag this one because it's of interest and will be interesting to see how it is implemented and the impacts that it has. But House Bill 2950A requires the Land Conservation Development Commission to amend Oregon's land use planning goals related to citizen involvement. So this is a bill that is looking at Goal One and ways that we can expand, modernize, reform, account for modern tools and technology, and how we can really allow the public to engage in, in our land use laws and the creation of Oregon in the future. So that's one that is, is being championed by Washington County Legislature Representative Susan McLean, who also is the, the Vice Chair of the House, or excuse me, of the Joint Committee on Transportation. So a bill that a lot of people are really excited about. And we can go to the next slide, and I think that, that completes my presentation. I'll pause for questions, and I will also say that there were so many bills that we are still tracking and that I wanted to add additional slides to update you on. And I, I thought that instead of that, we'll see what bills die on the 23rd, and I look forward to coming back next month or in July when you can fit me in and providing a post-session update and also an update on implementation of these bills that advance. Thank you so much for opportunity.
Thank you very much. Do commissioners have questions? Commissioner Carlson.
I couldn't help myself. I just had one question on the HB 2950. Am I right in thinking that Rep. McLean at the beginning wanted additional times for community involvement throughout the, the development process? Has it been amended? And what is her angle on it? What is she looking to achieve with the bill?
Very, very good questions. In terms of, of the amendment and those particular, you know, points of, of public involvement, what I would love to do is gather a little bit more information. I frankly need to look at the most recent amendment, and I'll work with our staff to, to send you the update on that. In terms of what her angle is, I, I know that there has been, I would say, an upwelling of, of the public who has wanted to get involved in reaction to the focus of housing production and the need to increase housing and density. So I think that many members of the legislature have been hearing from folks in the environmental space, younger Oregonians who are looking for additional ways to, to, to use their voice and be involved. And again, I will provide you with those detailed information on, on what they're proposing at this juncture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Vice Chair Monta Blanco.
Hey there. Thank you, Carly. I know you're exhausted, and you have more time, so I'm sorry. But thank you for being with us. I appreciate it. For SB 6A, the, the shot clock, will you provide some context as to how long it, some of these things normally take? I'm curious, there's some highlights from staff about like, why this wouldn't work. I, I trust what staff is saying. I, my expertise is different than staff's.
Absolutely. Thanks for that question, Vice Chair Monta Blanco. And I think I'm going to, as they say, phone a friend and, and refer to some of the subject matter experts in the room to speak to that timeframe. But I will say that there, there were many other problematic aspects of both of these bills that were, were amended. You know, SB 974 originally proposed that, that, you know, a developer, if their application was not advanced within that shot clock time period, they actually could seek a legal recourse so that the county would potentially have to pay for their legal fees. So there's been many, many things in these bills that, that would have been really hard to implement, but I'd love to turn to, not to put them on the spot, but one of our planning staff. I do believe that our planning timelines typically fall within these, within these windows. I know that particularly with 974A, what we're seeing with 120-day shot clock, that, that aligns with a lot of the land use timelines already. But I'll pause and, and let a department staff speak up if they'd like to.
Thank you, Eric. Can I take that question?
Thank you. I'm Carol Johnson, Planning and Development Services Manager. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair Monta Blanco for the question. SB 6 was very similar to SB 974 and had many of the same provisions. And the concern typically, and it was focused on building permit, but it didn't clarify the responsibilities of the applicant as clearly as 974 now does. And the concern was, is that staff were being held to a standard that they couldn't meet because they didn't have any control over that part of the process. So it didn't clarify that the clock only applied to the portion of the time that the application was actually with staff or review. It made, we were required to post the completeness items, and it's different for the building code than it is for planning. Planning, we typically have a checklist of all the application requirements for building permits. It's the entire building code. And so it also didn't take into account the wide variation in types of projects because you could have everything from, you know, a storage shed in the backyard to a fab plant, you know. And so it didn't take into, that the complexity of the project was not taken into consideration in terms of establishing those timelines. And so, you know, our probably most common type of building permit is a single, a new single-family residence. And we typically fall within that 45-day timeframe. Sometimes it can take longer, especially if it's an individual permit from kind of an owner-builder situation as opposed to a production builder that is, you know, very familiar with the rules and, and has, you know, a good application to begin with. But I guess that that was the other part of it, was we really felt it was unnecessary, and it was really focused on, you know, a couple, maybe neighboring jurisdictions that typically take much longer than Washington County does.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Carlson.
Okay, so I just was curious to hear, is there, do you think that there is a place where the county can be comfortable? Or are you satisfied with the amendments? Because I do think while the county does a really good job, that is really needed in some other jurisdictions to, you know, show the amount of, of difficulty for people to get their permits through. Is there a place that the county could be, if, if all the i's were dotted and t's are crossed, that there could be accommodation for some sort of a shot clock bill?
I, I think so, and I think where we are at with the Amendment 8 of 974, we're really close. And especially, it really clarifies that it's, you know, the clock is counting the days it's with, with the jurisdiction, not with the applicant. And I think as we're, we're going to be required to track that in a little more transparent way, we track our time, but we don't track really the days it's with the applicant. And I think that will be really informative for everyone involved. There's still some provisions because while it's focused primarily on engineering, it also adds some additional definitions and processes related to land use planning that are problematic. Particularly, it calls out a, a map change that would have the effect of increasing density would be processed as a Type 2 application as opposed to a Type 3, which is what a quasi judicial process would, would require now. And so that, that is going to be very challenging for us to, to pass that in the 120-day timeframe within the urban growth boundary. And I think, you know, Teresa has maybe some comments on that, on the zone change question, or no?
Well, the, the bill puts zone change in there, and for Washington County, if we, we, we have what's called a one-map system, so we don't have a separate zoning map and plan map. We, ours is together, so for us to do a zone change, it's, it's also a plan change. And it's the plan change part that is, is difficult to do in that timeframe and to do as a Type 2 because we're needing to make a number of semi-subjective findings about all the different policies that we have in our plan and metro policies and the state goals and all of that. And so it really fits best as a Type 3, and the, the timeframe is, is difficult because it does go to the Planning Commission and the Board. And so we were hoping just to have that part pulled out, that it's not really something that can happen. It, it, it's not really the same as a development application.
Right.
Vice Chair Monta Blanco.
Thanks. Carly, the, the simple answer to this might be that this bill isn't moving, but Senate Bill 3740, House Bill 3746, with condos and changing from like, the, the owner's, the builder's responsibility, liability from 10 years to seven years. I'm curious. That, that one came up on my feet or whatever and was, was not something I was terribly aware of. And I'm just curious if the county took a position, how that might impact our work around like more density, more middle housing.
Thank you for that question, Vice Chair. Thank you for that question, Vice Chair. I do not believe that was one that we took a position on. It was one that we were monitoring and watching. And I would have to take a closer look at where it's at. Sorry.
You're good. I mean, there are 1,700 bills. So I'm mindful there's a lot to keep track of. It was on my radar, and it wasn't something that I knew a lot about, and it just had me.
I can confirm it's still active. It had a work session today in the Senate. So I'm happy to collect some additional information and provide that to staff to forward.
Through the chair, if I could add a quick comment on that. So Vice Chair Monte Blanco, what that does is it creates a 10-year time period for design and defect lawsuits by residents of a certain type of housing product. And so what was happening is that builders were discouraged from producing for-sell townhouses because if they were attached, if the units were attached to each other, one unit could trigger a class action suit for the whole development. And so shortening that timeframe to seven years from 10 years kind of reduces that liability and might make it, you know, more palatable for a builder to do a for-sell product.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions?
Thank you very much for the report, and we look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you for your great work and opportunity.
Okay, so at this time, we will move to our second work session, which is Community Development Code 101.
And thank you, Chair Morividu. This is Teresa Churniak, Principal, Community Planner. So this came up last, at the last meeting, where we were doing a presentation on the Community Development Code assessment. And we thought, well, it might be good to give a little bit more background and information about the development code before everything then moves forward with the assessment. So we asked Anne Elvers to come. She's a senior planner in current planning and is the one that works most with folks that are coming to the counter and often has to explain code sections to them and how it's organized. And we thought she would be great to be the one to walk you through that, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. Please bear with me. I haven't done a PowerPoint in quite some time. I'm usually at the front counter. I wanted to bring in our CDC so you all can see the size of this document. So my goal tonight is to hit the high points. Just kind of tell you what's in here generally, how it's set up, and how to navigate it. So there will be time for questions at the end. So purposely be high level. So what is the CDC? It's part of the county's comprehensive plan. It has standards that regulate urban and rural uses and development in unincorporated area. And I believe we have over 200,000 citizens in unincorporated Washington County. So if you think about rural and urban land, and we have to have design regulations or design standards, development standards for every single land use district and a whole bunch of different uses, that's how you end up with a document this large. It does support the Washington County Comprehensive Plan by implementing the plan through the adoption and coordination of planning and development regs, as I said. If we look at this on the right-hand side of the screen, the top line is the Urban Unincorporated Comprehensive Framework Plan for the Urban Area. We see community plans. On the right-hand side, we see Rural Natural Resource Plan. Those are also elements of the comprehensive plan, but they're very general in nature. So for example, one element of the Rural Natural Resource Plan is to identify where quarries are allowed. So there's a map in that document that has what's called a District A overlay. You look at the map, and you can see specific properties that have that overlay, where a quarry could be allowed, and then it stops. You have to come to this document to get all the details. How do you permit it? What is the process? Is there screening and buffering, hours of operation, reclamation plans? That's all in this document. So that's how this is supporting the Rural Natural Resource Plan in that case. Because it contains development standards and regulations, current planning staff, we live in this document. We use it for virtually every question we get, every application we get. It's definitely a living and breathing document. How do you find it? For many years, we just had this sitting on everyone's desk. Now we're fortunate that we have MUNI code on contract. They are the keepers of our electronic version of the code. This is just a screenshot from the county website. If you go to the county website in the search box and you type in "community development code", it will give you a couple of search results, but you'll see where it says "community development code". That's the quickest way to get to it. And then once you're in that document, there is a search option in the document. So if you ever have a term you want to look up or a section, you can type it in there. It'll jump to it. There are seven articles in the code. Current planning deals mostly with 1 through 6, so that's what I'm going to give a brief overview on tonight. Article 7 is more for improvements inside the public right-of-way, where we deal primarily with improvements on private property. Article 1, it's going to reiterate that purpose and scope, which is to support the community plan and the comprehensive plans. The most commonly used part of that section is Section 106, which has definitions. So sometimes we'll have folks, maybe at the counter, that says, well, what is a dwelling unit? What do you consider a dwelling unit? The first place we go is to Section 106. There's a lot of definitions in there. I think we've done a really good job over the years of updating those definitions, adding them as new uses and questions come up. So usually, we can get our answer in 106. Section 430 that I'll talk about shortly, that's for special uses. There are some definitions in that section as well. This section says, if you can't find it in 106, you can't find it in Section 430, you have to go to a specific dictionary. It's Webster's Third New International Dictionary, copyright 1993, which is also a huge dictionary that sits on my desk. So we occasionally have to go to that, but usually, we can work with 106 and 430. Procedures. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, this slide. Section 201 talks about exempt, we call exempt uses, that don't require a permit. I'll talk more about that in the next slide. 202 through 212 talks about the procedures for processing land use development permits or land use applications. I'll go through that briefly as well. And then the last portion of that describes some very specific things like code compliance. It's a very small section. And then these two other types of applications that we do see on occasion. Procedures. So Section 201-2, the title of it is Exclusions from Permit Requirements. We call all the uses in there exempt uses, meaning they don't need a permit from current planning. So if what you're doing matches a description in 201, you don't need to come to us for a sign-off or an application. But it doesn't mean that you're exempted from any other department or jurisdiction, department, or sections requirements. So an example of that is a family daycare provider. So if I have a house and I want to have, I want to take care of three or four infants for childcare, that's listed as an exempt use. But I still have to get my state certs. If I'm going to add another bathroom for the business, I need to get a building permit for that. But you don't have to come to current planning. The property owner must ensure compliance with that. So because there is no permit, we don't even know if you're doing these uses or developments. So we trust that the property owner will follow the rules. A Type 1. So now we're getting into the different types of review processes. A Type 1 is an administrative review, which means we review the application in-house and staff renders a decision. There is no public notice. There's no public hearing. These are reviews where we're not using discretion. We don't have conditions of approval. Not using discretion means that the standards are very clear. A good example of that is an accessory dwelling unit. We do those as a Type 1 because there's probably about a dozen standards, such as it can't be taller than the main dwelling. It has to meet the same setbacks as the main dwelling. They're very clear. You either meet that or you don't. So because it's very cut and dried, we can do a Type 1. We send the decision just to the property owner and the applicant. We don't send it out to neighbors, anything like that. Type 2. Type 2s are still administrative review, meaning we're reviewing these applications and rendering a decision house in our work group. They, per the code, it says they require limited discretion during review and impacts on nearby properties are considered. So for example, limited discretion. An example of that would be an adjustment where someone can request a 20% reduction in a setback. It would go through a Type 2 review. There's some discretion in that the applicant has to make a case that they should get this reduction, but it's capped at 20%. So we have some discretion, but it's not, you know, à la carte. Impacts on nearby properties being considered. An example of that is a subdivision. So 90% of our land divisions are going through a Type 2 process. It takes into consideration things like screening and buffering, circulation, things that can affect adjacent properties or the neighborhood. But there are still guidelines and rules that you have to follow. Like I said, a great example is a land division. Type 3s, pardon me, involve a greater level of discretion, and they could have bigger impacts. So something like a variance. So we heard, I was mentioning, an adjustment is limited to 20%. Say you need more, you want more than a 20% adjustment to a setback. You move up to a Type 3. At that point, we're looking at a public hearing, public notice. Staff makes a recommendation based on what the applicant's reasonings are for the variance. And then a hearings officer makes the final decision. And the hearings officer is usually a land use attorney, somebody who really knows process, knows state law. It's great. Example of that would be a hospital, which could have some big traffic impacts or lighting, things like that. Also, a religious institution in a residential district. So you could build a temple or a mosque in a low-density residential district. But we want it to go to a public hearing so that people have an opportunity to weigh in and be heard, because the impact could be greater. Type 4. So this is where you all come in. You all are involved in Type 4 actions. Current planning does one, we handle the Type 1s through Type 3s. Long-range planning does not. Long-range planning works with planning commission and the board for Type 4 actions. So these are things like the creation or broad-scale implementation or revision of public policy. That would be like a change to a community plan. It also involves things like changes to the code because those are broad-scale changes. Of course, as you all know, there's public hearing process, there's notification. Staff makes a recommendation that goes through the hearing process for the final decision. Okay. Now we're into the land use districts. This is Article 3 and Article 4. I was saying, we reference this a lot when we're working with people, whether it's an application or at the front counter. The land use districts are urban and rural. In the urban areas, we have residential districts, commercial, industrial, institutional, mixed use. There's a North Bethany overlay. And in rural, it's not as broad. So we're just looking at residential, commercial, industrial. And then there are the three districts there, EFC, AF20, EFU, that are actually state-regulated. We have most of those requirements in our code. There are times where we have to refer to statute if our code hasn't been updated. But we still have the majority of those regulations in our code. So one thing that's interesting about Article 3, and another way that it implements this overarching comprehensive plan, is that every district, every land use district that's in there, pardon me, has an intent and purpose. And this is a snippet from the MUNI code. This is an example of community business district. And you'll see in that intent and purpose, it talks about, the intention is to provide a mix of retail service and business establishments on a medium to large scale. So in order to make that happen, our allowed uses have to go along with that. So we allow things like retail, food markets, restaurants, things that are service-oriented. You're not going to see things like manufacturing plants or solid waste transfer stations because those uses don't fit the intent and purpose of the district. And every district is different, so it's interesting to look at those. Also, in Article 3, not only does it have the list of allowed uses, but it also has things like minimum lot sizes, setbacks, height maximums. And we use that quite a bit when people are adding on to their house or wanting to do a shed or something like that. Article 3, also it lists prohibited uses at the end of each section. One thing that's different about the residential districts is it says specifically, if it's not listed here, it is not allowed. Period. In commercial institution or industrial districts, this is straight from the code, where it says if it's not specifically listed, we might still be able to allow that, but you have to go through a Type 2 process to have that determination made. So you get that determination made, and then you can come back if it's found to be a similar use and move forward with your development application. Article 4 has a lot in it. There are development standards, there are special use standards. The first chunk up there for 401 through 429, it has things about landscaping, sign requirements, setback in height. So things like what can encroach into a setback, or how do you measure a fence? It also contains floodplain standards. And the Significant Natural Resource Standards, you all probably remember from recently, that all those updates were placed into Section, excuse me, Article 4. Section 430 has a special use standards. These are all uses that have additional development criteria or standards. So if you're in Article 3 and you see a use, like an ADU is a good example, it'll say Type 1 ADU. And then a little dash that says Section 430-2. You always want to go to 430 because that's where the standards are going to be, or additional standards. And one thing to note with these allowed uses and with the special use standards is that it's not a given that these, all that these uses can be put on any property because there may be, I see, minimum site size requirements or larger setbacks. So the person really has to figure out, can I make this work? So it's not just a given just because it's listed. Section 431 has transit-oriented design standards. Transit-oriented district, there's not a lot of that in the county, but it's placed on properties that are within a certain distance from light rail or frequent bus stops. That has a whole table on what uses are allowed in that district and what design standards are. That's more of a pedestrian-oriented district. So you're going to see things like that. Talk about massing or high-quality materials because people are walking, just flying by in their car. Section 435, I had mentioned variances, adjustments to standards. That's where the standards for those are found. And then 440, non-conforming uses and structures. That comes up a fair amount, a non-conforming use or structure is something that, when it was built or established, pardon me, it met the zoning requirements at the time. But since things have changed over the years and the standards change, it may not comply now. So that section is very specific about what you can do with those structures. Aloha is a good example of a place that has non- Aloha is a good example of a place that has non-conforming uses, like residence, residential uses in what are now commercial districts. Back when they were built, it probably wasn't commercial in the seventies. So that's an interesting section to, to look at. And it does come up more often than not. Article five, public facilities and services. This mainly addresses service provider letters, how we go about getting those, who, what kind of applicant, applications need those? What the public, excuse me, road standards and things like that for developments, larger developments. You don't get into this article five really with additions to a house or a single family home. These are applied to larger developments. You'll see sidewalk standards is on there as well. There's also information in there about site distance requirements and driveways along certain types of roadways. Excuse me, in the final section I'll talk about tonight, article six, land divisions and property line adjustments. This section lays out the standards and process for divisions and property line adjustments in the rural area and separately in the urban area. Recently, section 606 was also added for middle housing. We do quite a few land divisions and many, many property line adjustments during the year. I'm ready for questions if anybody has them.
Thank you, commissioners, questions. Commissioner Will.
Thank you. I wanted to compliment you on the review was very good. And I also just curious, sometimes the planning commission hears, hears about development problems or challenges and getting development done. In throughout the code, are there areas in the code that are, that are like solid and doing well? Are there areas in the code that are hard, are hard on interpretations or things like that? Like you gave us an overview of where things are located. I'm curious, are there areas that are, you mentioned something about the definitions is very often used. Are you guys collecting matrix on that or feedback from the community about which parts of the codes are confusing? I'm just curious about some anecdotal stories about the code.
Yes, yes, we do. We communicate quite often with long range planning. If we are seeing a pattern in something that people might want or a different way of using their property. Rural ADUs is a good example of that. It's not something that's allowed right now, but the people that I supervise, we're, we're answering phone calls, we're at the front counter. There's a lot of interest in that. And so Teresa has asked us to pass that along so they can gauge how, how many people may want this and is there traction for it? We've also seen different ways of people using accessory structures. It's totally changed, especially since COVID. A lot, a lot of people want habitable space and accessory structures now. I think there's some clarifications we could make in the code to make that, the standards a little bit clearer for people. But we're always kind of keeping our finger on the pulse because people's desires do change. And sometimes we can change the code and sometimes we, we don't. One of the things, if you'll remember a while ago, food carts were really popular when that started coming out. They were all over the Food Network. Everybody was into it, but we didn't have an allowance for that in our code. Long range planning came up with standards for that, went through you all and the board and got that adopted. So now we have standards for food carts, which is exciting because people like that. We did that with farmers markets as well. And that was a direct response to people's interest in that. So it, it can, it's not an instantaneous change, but we definitely track people's desires or if we're seeing that we're hitting a roadblock someplace, we do share that with long range planning because our, our goal is to make this as workable as possible. And that's why it's always changing. It's just all, it's, like I said, it's a living and breathing document.
And I'll just add a tiny bit to that. One of the things with our community development code assessment is that we are asking different groups, what are the things that, that you think work or don't work or that you'd like us to look into or change with the code? So we, we have Suzanne talked about that at the last PC meeting and we have since then had a couple of the focus group meetings, one with community members, a couple with developers, we'll be talking with staff and with leadership and with utilities and service providers. So we're trying to get the, the range of people, development consultants to give us that kind of feedback so then we can be working on it. Aside from the kind of thing that Anne was talking about where staff has identified issues that they've let us know about.
Mr. Rosenberry.
Good chair. So to define the scope of what we're diving into this year, we're not changing the language. We're not changing the codes in this revision process. We're just trying to clean up and make it clearer and more concise and more usable.
I'll let Teresa address that. Yeah, so the assessment will look at probably the whole range and it will come out with recommendations. And then we'll, we'll be looking at and kind of prioritizing what those recommendations, the work that coming out of those recommendations, then to move forward with actually making the changes. So it could be simplifying, clarifying, removing sections, making format changes that, that make it shorter. So it could be many number of things.
Okay, so some technical changes, but also just some formatting simplification. Okay, thank you.
So I guess my question to you is how, I know that we have a role up here, but how can we be most helpful or impactful for you in this process?
Well, what kind of?
Well, I'll just say that, so Anne was really just coming to give you an overview of the codes. So the, it's so background information for when we do the assessment, but it's also good background information for any of the ordinances that we bring forward to you. Most of those are changes to this. So like she mentioned, the changes to the significant natural resource regulations, some of that was changing the maps, which are in the community plans. And then those get implemented through the regulations in that document, section 422. So it was to kind of give the, an overall context for both the CDC assessment and all of the work that we'll be bringing forward to you. So Anne's not asking for any particular thing. It was just to provide that context.
You know, I think just a side note, since this is really huge and you all will be weighing in and voting on ordinances to it, 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 it's a good idea just to go online and check it out if you haven't. Gives you a feel for it. It is a lot, but I think once you, you've had this little overview and you can poke around in the land use districts, see what's allowed and just kind of get the basics down. It might help you when you hear the ordinances to understand how they, they work with each other and what we're, what we're doing with this.
Vice Chair Monte Blanco.
Uh, thank you. This was a super informative presentation and I took lots of notes and I really appreciate it. I'm curious, we, and I'm asking this for two reasons of some context. I know the CPO program is going through some modernization at, at the county. And then we just heard from Carly about more community involvement in land use processes. I'm, I guess I'm curious, like what is, and feel free to just be like, please read section A. But I'm curious, like what is in the community code about community involvement? And I'm sorry that if that, if that's a huge question.
Yeah, no, the, so there is, is it article two procedures where it does talk about the different parties in the land development process. And the CPOs are one of those parties. And they do get notice of development applications, the type twos and threes and fours and do participate in neighborhood meetings and, and that sort of thing. So they do have a role in the development process. When part of why we talk with you about what the legislative changes are, is that those will then end up making changes to this document. And in some cases, that may mean that we have to change some of our processes and revise the, who the parties are or how we do the notice or when that goes. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but the, there is the role for the CPOs in there. I don't think really the, the CPO program review, review will change that role. But if it does, then we would need to probably make changes in there.
But, and I put it on myself to, to read those procedures if I want to learn more. And it, it sounds like there may be legislative rules that require us to make changes. So, and as it was mentioned, this is a living document that's being influenced by lots of parties.
And enough, I, I could just add, you know, it's, the processes identify who is notified, but then it also says these categories of uses are a little bit more impactful. And so they require a neighborhood meeting prior to an application being submitted. There are other types of applications that we get, we send out a notice once the application has been deemed complete, meaning that it has all the information we need to review the application. And then it gets another notice is sent out once the staff decision has been issued. So there's kind of a front end opportunity and then a back end opportunity with an opportunity for, to actually file an appeal if you really disagree with what the staff decision is. But who, who gets that notice is the, the list of folks that Teresa was outlining, which do include the CPOs because it's based on a, you know, different geography. Thank you.
Other questions? I had one question. Where, you may have already explained this, so I apologize if I missed it, but where do the quasi judicial hearings come in, in the type approvals?
So those are type four.
Okay.
And that's what I would say, that you, long range deals with that because it's the broader policy changes. The type ones through three are your typical land use applications, a home occupation permit, land division, new church, expansion of a hospital. Those are the things we handle.
And actually I was just looking at this today because we were looking at the state law proposed changes and how does this work for plan amendments? And actually I was a little bit surprised. Our plan amendments are type threes.
Oh.
The quasi judicial plan amendments are type threes. The legislative plan amendments are type fours. So if, if someone has a property and they want to go from a lower density residential to a higher density residential, they will ask for a quasi judicial plan amendment because it's, it's just affecting their property. It's not got, you know, a wider area that it's affecting. It's not a policy question. It's really about meeting various plan standards and that sort of thing. But it has a different, different process and timeframe because it does come to the planning commission. And it may, if it's rural, it will go to the board. So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a both. So it's called the type three, but it has some special provisions and processes.
Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation. It's very, I appreciate you. Okay, next on the agenda is a work session on adoption of metro, metro town center boundaries.
Thank you, Chair Moribidu and commissioners. We wanted to brief you on this topic because this will be an ordinance that'll come before you probably a little later this year. And I'm Suzanne Savin with Community Planning. So just as a background tonight, we're gonna, this presentation's gonna first touch on Metro's 2040 growth concept that was adopted back in the mid 1990s. And then it's going to talk about the county's planning work that we did back in the late 1990s on the Raleigh Hills Town Center. And then it's going to flash forward about 20 years to the more recently adopted climate friendly and equitable communities rules that were adopted by the state that require the county to now adopt some boundaries for certain metro 2040 centers. We'll show you what the, what the current thoughts are about what those preliminary boundaries would be. And we'll summarize the ordinance and then we'll talk about the planned public outreach and next steps. So Metro's 2040 growth concept. This was a regional land use and transportation vision that Metro adopted in 1995. And it included designation of centers throughout the entire metro region. Metro identified several town centers that were meant to provide services to tens of thousands of people. And Metro identified a smaller number of regional centers that were meant to be commerce hubs that would serve hundreds of thousands of people. And this is just an excerpt, it's kind of a zoom in on one part of Metro's 2040 growth concept map. So this zoom in shows a part of Washington County and shows some of the town centers and a couple of the regional centers that Metro have, has identified on their growth concept map. So I'm going to, going to point to a couple of things with this laser pointer if I can. Let's see, is it not working?
I was, but it was.
Oh, okay, okay.
Put the point down. There you go.
Oh, I can't see where, oh, there it is. Okay, great. So one of the town centers in unincorporated Washington County is the Bethany Town Center. Another one is the Aloha Town Center. And this is the Cedar Mill Town Center. These three town centers are all wholly unincorporated Washington County. There's a couple of other things shown on this map I'll just talk about for context. So this is the Tanis born Amber Glen. This is a regional center and this is in city of Hillsborough. This is Beaverton's Town Center in Beaverton. The Sunset Transit Center, I'll talk a little bit more about later, but this is a town center that's mostly in Beaverton, but a part of it is in unincorporated Washington County. And then I'm going to talk a lot more about this particular town center, which is Raleigh Hills Town Center, which is mainly in Washington County. So when Metro created their growth concept map, they had sort of generalized, generalized boundaries for these various centers. After 1995, the county did adopt more specific boundaries for, let me see if I can work this again. Let's see where, there you are. We, we adopted a specific boundary for Bethany Town Center and a specific boundary for Aloha and a specific boundary for Cedar Mill. And that left, at that time in the late nineties, Raleigh Hills as the one town center that we had not yet adopted a boundary for. And we, we started working on adopting a boundary for that in 1999. So this is a zoom in on again, the Metro 2040 growth concept map. It's zooming in on the Raleigh Hills Town Center area as shown on Metro's map is very generalized and it showed part of the, part of the town center within Washington County and part of the town center extending east into Multnomah County slash city of Portland over here. So in the late 1990s, when the county was starting to think about planning for the Raleigh Hills Town Center, one of the first things that county staff did was reach out to the city of Portland and ask the city whether they wanted any of the town center to extend into Portland and the city said no. So, so with that information, the county then started to coordinate with the city of Beaverton on, on a proposed boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center that would be wholly in Washington County. And we, in 1999, we filed an ordinance to adopt a Raleigh Hills Town Center plan and boundary. So this is the proposed, what So this is the proposed, what's showing on this slide is the proposed boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. I'll point out a couple of things just to kind of get you oriented to this. So this is Beaverton Hillsdale Highway right here. This is Shoals Ferry Road. And this is that sort of notorious intersection that everybody loves. And then this is the Fred Meyer. And there's also, I think, a new Provence restaurant that's right along here. And there's a New Seasons right along here. So that kind of orients you a little bit. There's a school down here. Beaverton School District, I think it's a K through eight maybe school right here. So in 1999, we filed an ordinance and the ordinance was proposing that this would be the boundary, this heavy line would be the boundary around the town center. And it mainly encapsulated properties that already had higher density or higher intensity land use designations on them. You know, you can imagine the Fred Meyer has a higher intensity, I think, as a community business district designation on it. So this boundary was sort of separating, was enclosing those types of properties within the boundary. And then the properties that were north of there, let's see, here. These, I think, are probably R5. These are low residential. I think these are probably like R6, R9. These were not included in the boundary. So we were trying to capture the higher density, higher intensity within the boundary. The other thing this plan proposed, it wasn't just drawing a boundary around this area. It was also proposing to to change the land use designations within that boundary to be maybe even higher density, higher intensity than they already were. Some transit oriented district designations were proposed for many of those properties within the boundary. And there was also a proposal for new development within the boundary to have to meet sort of more stringent standards with regard to buildings having to be closer to the street. There were, this ordinance was, there was a lot of interest from the community and some opposition from the community regarding this ordinance. It got engrossed, meaning that it got amended over time. And it got, it went over a two year period. So it had hearings that happened in the year 2000 as well. And it ultimately got rejected by the Board of Commissioners because of the concerns that were raised during the hearings. So the county did not end up, not only do we not end up adopting a town center plan, we also didn't end up adopting even a boundary for this area. So it remains an area that doesn't have like an official town center boundary. What we did do, and this was in the year 2000 after that prior ordinance had not passed. What we did do is, let's, there we go, is we threw a subsequent ordinance. We adopted this sort of round circle area, town center area of interest around the Raleigh Hills area more generally. So it didn't commit to any specific boundary, but it just showed the county's intent that someday there would be a boundary in that general location. And that's sort of where things were left. And so now is the flash forward about 20 years. So the governor had executive, back in 2020, the governor had executive order 20-04. And that directed state agencies to take action to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions and address climate change. And the Land Conservation and Development Commission responded to that in 2022 by adopting the climate friendly and equitable communities rules. And that kind of brings us to the need to now adopt some boundaries, both for Raleigh Hills and a couple of the other areas that I'm going to talk about in a moment. So when these rules were initially published in 2022 and staff reviewed them, we knew that the rules meant that the county would need to adopt a boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. We wouldn't need to do a town center plan. So we wouldn't need to contemplate any changes to land use designations. But we did need to adopt some sort of boundary around the area. Later in conversations that we had with city of Beaverton staff and Metro staff, we realized that not only did we have to adopt a boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center, we also had to adopt a boundary for the Sunset Transit Center Town Center. Because, and I'll talk about this more in a subsequent slide, but because of the fact that the Sunset area also includes some unincorporated county property, not just Beaverton property. So we first thought that it was that just Beaverton had to work on the Sunset Transit Center. And then we realized we were involved in that as well. And then lastly, we realized that we also needed to update the Washington Square Regional Center boundary because again, that boundary also includes some unincorporated county property. And I'll talk about more about these three areas. So this is the this is the preliminary boundary that we're thinking about now for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. It looks quite similar to the boundary that was proposed way back in 1999, 2000 through that ordinance that I talked about earlier. So again, we've got the, let's see. Again, we've got the Fred Meyer right here. We've got Beaverton Hillsdale Highway, you know, New Seasons is right there. So it basically is a pretty similar boundary. We had a board work session last November with the Board of Commissioners where we had briefed them about the fact that the climate friendly and equitable community rules were going to require us to adopt a boundary for this Raleigh Hills Town Center. And we got board direction to use that ordinance 535, that ordinance from back in 1999, 2000, as our starting point and to try to adhere to that to the extent that we could. So we used that as a starting point. We then had further conversations with the cities of Portland and Beaverton. So okay, so Portland reiterated that they did not want the boundary to go into Portland at all. And they were fine with us having it in Washington County. They asked us to remove two of the properties that had been included back in 1999. And that's these two that I've got my cursor on right now. They asked us to take those out of our proposed boundary because of the fact that these two properties, even though right now they're in Washington County unincorporated, they're in the city of Portland's urban service area. So at some point, at some point in the future, they may be served by Portland. And Portland did not want to have the sort of confusion of having a property that they may end up serving being in a Washington County Town Center boundary. So we did remove those two properties. The other thing that we conferred with the city of Beaverton about is these properties here that have the blue hatch marks. These properties are all in the city of Beaverton now. They weren't in the city of Beaverton back in 1999 when we first proposed this boundary, but they have since been annexed to the city. So we asked Beaverton, are you okay with these Beaverton properties being within the county's proposed boundary? They were okay with that. But what it meant for them is that they will have to, that Beaverton will have to adopt this same boundary into their comprehensive plan when the county adopts it into our comprehensive plan because there's some of their jurisdiction is implicated. So let's see, this is the Sunset Transit Center Town Center. So this is one where most of the area is within the city of Beaverton. So this area with the horizontal lines, these are all city of Beaverton properties. But then these properties in color are all Washington County properties. And this preliminary boundary was agreed upon between the city and the county. And with the county properties, what's been included in this boundary are land use designations that are higher density and higher intensity already. So this blue area is institutional. And right now it contains Providence St. Vincent Hospital. It contains Catlin Gable School. And it contains the West Twolleton View Elementary School. And then these other colors are all, that's a certain type of transit oriented district, that kind of brown color, this red, all these other, these greens. All these other colors are also different transit oriented districts which allow more intense development. So the county agreed that it did seem appropriate to include those within this boundary. So again, because this is one that has both city of Beaverton and Washington County unincorporated, this boundary will be adopted by both of the jurisdictions. But the same boundary will be adopted by both jurisdictions. And then the last one is the Washington Square Regional Center. This one back in 2021, the city of Tigard adopted an updated boundary for this regional center. And that is what's shown on this slide is the boundary that Tigard adopted. Tigard had the county and Beaverton involved in that process back in 2021. So we participated in that process with them and we agreed, the county agreed with this boundary. However, what we didn't do is, we didn't back in 2021 amend our own Washington Square Boundary Map to show this boundary. So we still have an old boundary that needs to be updated. So there's part of, there is some county unincorporated property included in this boundary. And this is a Mets, part of the Metzger area that's included within this boundary. So we now need to update our boundary to be consistent. City of Beaverton also is having to look at this this boundary as well because the horizontal lines are our city of Beaverton properties. The dotted, the dotted line, the dotted pattern is city of Tigard properties. And the city of Beaverton is now thinking that maybe they want this area right here, this area that's kind of between these two projections, that maybe they want this area included in the Washington Square Regional Center as well. They're still discussing that with Tigard. If it turns out that the city of Beaverton does want this area in between, and if they propose to sort of kind of connect these two areas, then Washington County would adopt probably the same, we'd probably do that same thing. We'd adopt the same outline as city of Beaverton. So this one's a little more in flux right now.
Can you pin up where the mall is?
I think the mall is in this vicinity right here, Washington Square Mall. So this kind of summarizes the upcoming ordinance. And I want to clarify that these boundaries that we're proposing would be adopted into the comprehensive framework plan for the urban area. So not that, not that tall document you saw earlier that Anne was just talking about. This is a different document in our comprehensive framework plan. So I want to clarify too, that we are, we are sort of simply and solely adopting boundaries for these areas. This ordinance is not going to change any land use designations of any county properties. It's not going to change any development regulations for any properties or authorize any new development or place any burdens on services. So with, we're also thinking ahead to public outreach. And we've got plans to notify property owners within the center's boundaries about this ordinance and community participation organizations and city neighborhood associations and the agencies that serve the properties in these boundaries. With this notification, we'll probably try to do that jointly with the city of Beaverton's to we're both doing the same thing. So we think we're probably going to have a notification maybe from both of us that says the same thing. We'll also offer, if any of the CPOs are interested or neighborhood associations are interested in having us talk about this with their groups, we will offer that. And we think we're going to file the ordinance by August, which means that it'll come before you probably in September or maybe a little bit later in the fall. The goal is to try to get it adopted by the end of this year. So with that, we'll pause for questions.
So I just had a question. I realize it doesn't change your land use designation or your uses, but will it open, being in an urban or what, a regional transit, our regional development center? What is the proper term?
Oh, a regional center.
Would it open it up for any economic development, additional financing tools like redevelopment or any other beneficial tax opportunities if someone wanted to do something in it?
I guess not that I know of. I do know that some of our transportation planning staff have said maybe it would make some areas more eligible for transportation grants, but that
I just would like to know if there's any, I mean, maybe that could be a really good thing. And that's, if so, that's a selling point for when you're doing the roadshow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was the main thing that we thought there could be a benefit on. We know there are transportation issues in Raleigh Hills. And so that designation could help if there was grant funding that we would be going for that, you know, by saying it's Metro 24 Town Center that has an established boundary, that that could, could serve us well, whether or not it's specifically one of the criteria in the grant.
Vice Chair Monte Blanco?
My question was very similar. And could you do me a favor and go back to the slide about what it will not do?
Sure.
So I can take better notes. So and I'm, I actually, I don't live in any of these areas, but much to my, my peers' question around like, well, so what changes? Or how will, how will someone who's lived in this area for 20 plus years be impacted?
Yeah, I'm not sure that they will be. I mean, as far as I know, they won't be. But we are, we are, meaning the county, we are still required and other jurisdictions are still required under the terms of the climate friendly and equitable communities rules to adopt any boundaries within our jurisdiction that have not already been adopted. So that's why we're, we are doing this is to comply with those rules. I don't know that it's going to have any impact on the property owners within those areas.
Okay, thank you. I think I just wanted to better understand that this is mostly compliance. Thank you.
Vice Chair Carlson.
So just being additionally cautious, I know climate friendly equitable communities have some, I would say unusual, potentially more stringent recommendations if you're doing a redevelopment. Would that, by doing this and placing a piece of property in this, this new designation, let's say someone was going to redevelop it and tear down an older home, build, you know, something, you know, cottage cluster or, you know, triplex duplex, whatever. Would that potentially increase or put different burdens on them than they would have had prior if it wasn't in the new designation?
Not that I know of. I think when the county's working on its update of its transportation system plan, there might be some implications, but I don't really know the specifics of that.
I just think that that's a, you know, when we're going to do these roadshows, I think we have to be very transparent with the public and say, you know, because I do know that some of those, particularly around Metzger, there are some older homes on larger lots that are really ripe for redevelopment or, you know, a little bit more density. And I would, I'd want to make sure that we knew, you know, by doing this, she may see this or this or this, but only if you're going to make some sort of alteration to your property.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
We do know that there are some CFEC. I'm not sure if they are requirements or things for us to look at within a town center for better pedestrian accessibility and looking at maybe wider sidewalks or crossings or that sort of thing. But that's something that through the transportation system plan update, we would have to be looking at. And I don't think there are any requirements again, it's just like, you need to look at this. You need to think about this and plan it.
Other questions? I have one question about working with the other jurisdictions. I don't anticipate there will be any issues working with them. But what happens if there is a disagreement between the boundaries that are proposed?
I think, I think probably Metro would probably be involved in the conversation too. They have been so far. The way the CFEC rules are written, they talked about the fact that Metro had to change its, some of the language that Metro had to change its, some of the language in its Urban Growth Management Functional Plan by the end of last year to basically say the same thing that the CFEC rules already said about Metro jurisdictions needing, needing to adopt boundaries. So we've been working pretty closely with Glenn Hamburg, who's our, the Metro representative for our area. And he has been very helpful. He's also been working, you know, he's also, you know, sort of almost has like a, on speed dial, if I can use that antiquated thing. He's got Beaverton and Tigard and all the other jurisdictions because Metro, it's in Metro's best interest to make sure all the jurisdictions are, are being consistent because what Glenn has indicated is that at the end of this year, when hopefully all of the Metro jurisdictions have adopted the boundaries they're supposed to, that Metro's going to go back and, and go to their 2040 Growth Map and like make all of their boundaries instead of the ones that are remaining that are blobby, they're going to make them match what we all came up with. So they, you know, that, he's actually one of the people that had told us initially, oh, you are going to have to deal with the Sunset 1-2 because it is sort of three-quarters Beaverton and one-quarter yours. So you two have to get together and you have to be consistent. So I think that Metro's going to probably help us kind of make sure we're all consistent.
Thanks. Are there additional questions? Thank you very much. That wraps up our work sessions for today. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of minutes. We have one set of minutes to approve. It's the April 16th meeting. Did anyone have any corrections or comments on the April 16th meeting minutes? Seeing none and without objection, the minutes for April 16th, 2025 are accepted as submitted. And next on the agenda is Planning Commission announcements. Do any commissioners have anything they'd like to share? I have a quick, a quick thing today. I just wanted to share with commissioners, oh, actually, Commissioner Will, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so, sorry to cut you off there. I don't know if this was the point. I just noticed during that last slideshow, maybe this is a question for Washington County Productions, but as a, as a remote panelist, I could only see the view of the, the staff talking. But when my fellow commissioners were talking, I couldn't see them. So maybe that's just something Washington County Productions might want to think about. Is there, is there the two different camera angles? Like the angle now, I see, on the big screen in the middle, I see you guys. I didn't see that video when, with staff were talking. So when the staff opened it up for questions and one of you guys asked a question, I couldn't see you. So just a comment, maybe it'd be nice to maybe have a different login, one that looks at you guys and one that looks at staff. So when, when, when you ask a question, I can see you guys talking. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Will. And we'll follow up on that. I don't know if you can hear remotely, could you, could you all hear remotely? There is one control for both cameras, so they cannot be going simultaneously.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe the, when, when the Planning Commission Chair or one of the commissioners asks questions, switch the button so we can see them talking. And then when the, the staff responds, switch back or something. But if, if there was two, both, and they're both active, that'd be great. But, uh, it just like right now, for example, I can't see staff. And I don't need to because you're talking. But when they are talking, I don't see them, I only see you, so. And when the power point was up, I only saw them, I didn't see you. It's nice to see the person talking. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, back to announcements. I had one announcement that I just wanted to share with everybody. There is a new affordable housing development that has a groundbreaking ceremony in Tigard on June 11th. It's for Woodland Hearth. Community partners for affordable housing is a developer, and Washington County provided some funding. And Chair Harrington will be there and speaking along with the mayor of Tigard and some Metro councilors. So I just thought that if anyone was interested, I would let everyone know. It's a great opportunity to go and meet some people and see some great work in the community.
Do we know the time?
I can order that information to staff and they can send it to everyone. Any other announcements? Okay. With that, without objection, we move to adjournment, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.